Good evening. My name is Tanya Bowers and I would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I would like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undergoing indivisible sovereignty and justice for all.
To begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll. Tanya Bowers, present.
Joseph Campos. Paul Mendez.
Present.
Kim Lehrman.
Present.
Abel Campos.
Present.
Isaac Myron. Rachel Teal.
Present.
Jay Handler.
Present.
Jerry Cochran. Is Jerry there?
Yes.
Yeah. Madam Chair, there are seven members present and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to the city council regardless of changing, regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I would like to remind the audience, tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Cable, PSC Channel 191, and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also being recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available online on the City of Pasco website, so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I would like to ask the audience that you mute your microphones to prevent any interruptions during our meetings. For those present this evening, when you are given the opportunity to address the commission, please raise your hand so that we know that you would like to address the commission. Speak clearly into the microphone and state your name and city of address for the records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening not only be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may either be benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time, or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any items on the agenda? Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Like the records show, there were no declarations. We as a Planning Commission need and value in your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make recommendations to city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at the Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed into the official record the city council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. The next item is approval of the meeting minutes from the April 15, 2021 meeting. These meeting minutes were mailed out to commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to take a look at them. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Hey, Commissioner, Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Cochran.
Yes, Commissioner Cochran?
Hey, I don't, it might be a minor niggly point of order, but I did notice on the meeting minutes as I was reading through, is there one motion that was recorded as being moved and seconded by Commissioner Campos? And I think from a point of order, that's probably, I don't know if that was a typo or if there was different Campos or if there was, that wasn't the right one, but I just noticed on the Code Amendment Bill 1923, it was both moved and seconded. I think that might be a typo, but maybe Kristin knows.
Madam Chair, we'll reexamine the video from last month and correct those administratively if that's acceptable.
Okay.
No, I just, I don't even know if it's a big issue. I just noticed from a meeting point of order, it's maybe a little niggly.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochran. We appreciate that. So, given that, should we hold on approving the minutes? No, we can still go ahead? All right, so, other than that one catch, I would entertain a motion.
Then, Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Cochran. I move to approve the, whatever the date, April 15 meeting minutes as recorded with the amendments that the staff will make.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Cochran and seconded by Commissioner Handler. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. All right, so the next on our agenda are workshop items. We actually have two of them. One is a code amendment regarding accessory dwelling units. This is HB 1923, Master File Number 202003. Staff?
Yes, good evening, members of the Planning Commission. This item, I'm sorry, this report is intended to serve as an update on staff efforts related to adopting and updating our existing regulations for accessory dwelling units here in the City of Pasco. You may remember that at the December 2020 workshop, staff provided initial reports on accessory dwelling units. And so this is just an update on our efforts with an additional focus on preliminary staff considerations for the Planning Commission tonight. So, again, just a reminder, this is part of the three items. Staff was authorized back in September 2019 to pursue three code amendments to increase housing affordability here in the City of Pasco related to House 1923. This is the third action item. Next slide, please. So, accessory dwelling units are smaller, independent units located on the same lot as an existing standalone dwelling or home. ADUs provide the same basic function and facilities as a typical home necessary for daily living and is independent from the main home. There are a variety of ADU types, but the two primary are attached, which are the additions such as a basement or a mother-in-law, et cetera, or a detached ADU, which currently is not permitted and not allowed here in the City of Pasco. Those are separated from the main home or the principal dwelling unit. So on the next slide, there's a variety of noted benefits, and I've just included those provided by AARP. They are one of the national leaders in promoting ADUs across the country. And so, some of the benefits that they've noted are that they are smaller, so they offer some additional costs and affordability options for folks downsizing, the flexibility and variety for potential residents, entry-level housing for single residents, and also enabling families to expand beyond their primary home within the same lot. So on the next slide, again, just a summary of some of the community input. This one in particular is from the Pasco Housing Choices Survey that we've used quite a bit now. This is from the fall of 2020. This was primarily aimed at receiving input from housing builders, stakeholders, developers, realtors, et cetera. And so, the responses of this survey indicated there's about 95% indicated more housing was necessary in the City of Pasco. Land acquisition was the biggest barrier. 90% of responses had indicated that they were supportive of allowing ADUs in the City of Pasco. And on the next slide, this is from the community, the National Citizen Survey conducted every two years by the City of Pasco. This is from 2020. And again, you can see additional interest in flexible zoning standards, incentives, and market choice were evident in the 2020 survey. So obviously, from both the private and public standpoint, quite a bit of interest in housing choice flexibility through a variety of methods, whether it's zoning flexibility or incentives are shown as interest here. So referring back to the proposal, we wanted to summarize what we received so far. So, you see the table here. There's the specific regulations within the ADUs, so what kind and specific requirements of each. There's, the second column is what we currently have in the Pasco Municipal Code. The second column is what you've seen before, which was the House 1923 legislation enacted in 2019. That's the original bill which we are acting under, and you can see that all of those are must be allowed or strict adherence to 1923. So, in 2020, there was added flexibility given through House 1923. And that made all of those specific regulations optional. So, we believe, and we've spoken with the Department of Commerce, that 1923, although I want to say promoting housing flexibility was great, the benefit of 1923 was it allowed us to have more of a local decision-making process with particulars of ADU regulations, all the way down to maximum square footage of the ADU, the owner occupancy requirements, and the off-street parking requirements, which tends to be one of the bigger hurdles in ADU legislation across the country, really. And so, just wanted to show the breakdown of what we currently have or do not have in the city, 1923's original intent, and the added flexibility through 1923, which we are allowed to work under as well. So on the next slide, staff has prepared some initial considerations for the Planning Commission tonight. And so, I'll run through these, but on the attached ADUs, which we currently allow, we obviously would recommend no change to that. We do recommend allowing detached ADUs on all lots if the lot coverage maximum and the setback regulations of the underlying zoning district can still be achieved. So we have the RS 20 all the way up through R4. Each has their variable with regards to setbacks, heights even, right, and lot coverage. We would recommend that we would allow an ADU if those can still be achieved. On the off-street parking requirement, staff would recommend that we keep the current ADU requirement of one off-street parking space per unit. However, we do believe that there's some potential and opportunities to identify additional considerations for flexibility on that. Obviously, we don't want to create parking problems in the city, but I think we almost have to decide, do we want a parking problem or a housing problem sometimes? And I think this is an opportunity for us to begin to, not necessarily pilot, but take some very preliminary or early steps at identifying where in this city do we have some flexibility to make that more of an option versus a requirement? So, staff would certainly welcome any thoughts from Planning Commission on that particular regulation. There's the existing owner occupancy requirements. Right now, we have an eight-month owner occupant requirement. We're not entirely sure why that exists, but it's there. Through 1923, we're not allowed to have that. 1923, it's an option for us. We recommend eliminating the owner occupancy requirements. In our research, whether it's through AARP or state guidance or through the Department of Commerce, they've indicated that that owner occupancy requirement is more of a barrier to limiting or eliminating ADUs as an option in the first place. It also allows you to rent it out as well, so it's another income opportunity for the primary dwelling owner as well. The other regulation here is the square footage. Right now, Pasco limits that to 800 square feet. 1923 said that the minimum could be 1,000 square feet, not the max. And 1923 is an option. We believe we should use that 1,000 square foot threshold or 55% of the total square footage of the primary residence, whatever is greater. I think, again, with the parking and the square footage, there's some room for us to dive into the weeds a little bit based on comments and concerns or general inquiries from the Planning Commission. But certainly would welcome feedback on those particular components of the ADU legislation or regulations here. I also wanted to mention that the lot coverages, the heights, the setbacks, they default to the underlying residential zoning districts. So if you have an ADU permit that's in the R3s district or RS 12, those regulations still apply. And that also wanted to mention that the minimum separation between a detached ADU and the primary dwelling, we would default, again, back to the city's meet fire separation standards. We adopt the International Fire Code in our municipal code, so we would defer back to that. And we've also discussed that with our Building Official and Plans Examiner to ensure safety compliances with that and general consistency within our code. That actually is the majority of tonight's presentation. Just wanted to bring to you these draft considerations for the Planning Commission tonight. We, again, welcome any feedback from you this evening and would like to come back at the June Planning Commission meeting with a public hearing and a draft ordinance for your review at that time. The next slide just has a few basic next steps. We intend to issue the State Environmental Policy Act, the environmental analysis, by the end of next week. And then, again, come back to you in June with a draft ordinance for your review. We don't perceive there to be a motion at that meeting, but definitely would try to have the draft ordinance for your review. So that concludes our presentation tonight on accessory dwelling units. And again, welcome any feedback, comments, or questions from the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez. I would like to open it up to my commission, my fellow commission members. Any questions or comments? Yeah, Mr. Handler?
Yes. Jacob, what uses are permitted in these? Pardon, didn't I have a tape on my question here? But who can live in these things? Is there other restrictions?
Well, anyone, really, anyone would be permitted to live in them. Obviously, the primary residents would have the authority of who they're renting or potentially selling to. Yeah, it could be considered a separate dwelling unit from the main dwelling.
I was just curious, I mean, if it's a mother-in-law unit or something like that, you know, parking is probably not going to be a big issue.
Yeah, and that's why, well, in some jurisdictions, they've eliminated the parking requirement just to eliminate that barrier, because sometimes adding a driveway space or additional space for a car eliminates the actual space for the unit itself. I do think that there's some room for us to be flexible here at the city and mindful as well of our vehicle characteristics, et cetera. We are well over 90% drive-alone area in this region. I wouldn't go after the ADU ordinance to shift that trend, but it certainly could be an opportunity for us to offer some flexibility.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And I think specifically in more in the parts of Pasco that were plotted well before the automobile became dominant, we have quite a bit of ADUs that are not permitted. And that would be a discussion code enforcement would be involved with, obviously, but this actually would allow them to be permitted and then regulated per the code.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Mendez. I've got a question. Is there any kind of occupancy requirements in terms of the number of people that can occupy this 1,000-square-feet ADU?
Yeah, we would default the municipal code, and I don't have the number on the top of my head, but there's a...
No, and neither do I. However, there is an International Building Code standard, and I'm not sure what that is. I couldn't tell you right now. We can bring that info back, though.
I have a question. This is Commissioner Lehrman.
Please, Commissioner Lehrman.
Yep, can you hear me okay? So as, this is a detached dwelling. Is there a code about how to address the integrity of the aesthetics of the original home or the area as these potentially new detached buildings may pop up in the neighborhood?
Yeah, right now, we would default to the underlying zoning district. So the, we have residential design standards, and those would apply to the detached accessory dwelling units. Now, some jurisdictions have gone as far to create separate design standards for ADUs. I'm not sure if we're there yet. I think it would be in our best interest to develop those over the long term. However, right now, we would default to the existing design standards in terms of root pitch, design, and we'd also, and we don't have the draft ordinance, obviously, for tonight, but would add some language with regards to, you know, keeping within general characteristics of the principal dwelling unit. You know, the front has to face the front of the street, must be set back behind the principal dwelling unit, so you don't have two side by side. There's some general best practices for ADUs that we would certainly include in our ordinance, but not specific different design standards or aesthetics besides what's already required by the municipal code of the underlying zoning district.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez.
This is Commissioner Cochran. I have a couple of questions.
Please.
Can you go back one slide, John, on the deck, maybe, or whoever's controlling? So, Jacob, does the 2019 version, is that superseded by the 2020 bill? Or are they kind of mushed together? I'm trying to figure out how to interpret that, where, does the 1923 get superseded by 1923?
It's a little bit of both. We submitted an amendment with the Department of Commerce because we weren't sure what direction the Planning Commission would like to go in with regards to sticking to 1923. We're taking advantage of the flexibility with the 1923 legislation. So, we can move forward under either based on the Planning Commission's decisions.
Now, wasn't there some money attached to 1923 that you get as a grant if you fulfill those? Is that impacted?
It could be. Now, we're not sure exactly how the Department of Commerce will, I guess, determine how close we met their stand. Because now we're operating under two, so we've kind of got some wiggle room. And it's what they recommended as well. There was $41,000 worth of potential grant funding available to us based on what is ended up, based on what is adopted by council. So, if we differentiate too much, we might see a smaller amount received by the city. However, I don't believe that would be the primary factor or importance for the, I guess we would recommend not the primary factor of Planning Commission consideration. I think if something works a little bit better for us locally, then that's the route we would recommend.
So, the last question was just, and maybe more of a comment, is that the owner occupancy thing, you know, I've seen these in other cities. Like I have a house in Lake Shalan, and you know, Pasco's not a vacation destination like Lake Shalan, but in Lake Shalan, they have owner occupancy requirements for the purpose of preventing people just opening up these housing units for, you know, the college parties on Memorial Day weekend or Labor Day weekend, and, you know, really disrupting neighbors. So I could see a similar effect here, where you have these become just wide-open rentals and neighbors who moved into a neighborhood who were expecting to live in, you know, next door to single-family dwellings are now, you know, impacted by the college kids partying in the ADU next door to them that they didn't expect when they built it. So I think that may be one of the drivers or motivations for, you know, owner occupancy requirements. I do think we probably need to look at, you know, flexibility, but I do, I guess that's my only concern, is I feel like you want to meet the housing flexibility needs in the community and up that, and you want to also allow property owners to do what they want with their property within reason. But at the same time, you know, if my neighbor next door here in West Pasco built an ADU and then rented it out to college students, I'm not sure I'd be happy with that, right? So, just a consideration there.
Any other commissioners?
This is Commissioner Campos.
Please, Commissioner Campos.
Yeah, is there any way the city can look into as far as talking about parking? If we do, say, require that one space, what's the percentage that eliminates those houses who could do an ADU versus if we don't require that? I'm only thinking just because if we require that one space and it eliminates, you know, a significant percentage of those houses who could have the space to do the ADU, then it kind of defeats the purpose of creating more housing.
Yeah, I mean, we haven't done the math, but based on the existing layout and planning here in the City of Pasco, that specific requirement would likely eliminate every residential unit between US 395, Oregon Avenue, the Columbia River, and Highway 12. So, that's the particular area that we would think deserves some additional consideration, especially with the frequency of transit available in that area.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too. Okay, thank you.
So, I initially was really pleased to see this. I love that we have other opportunities for housing and affordable housing, given the shortage at our present time. My, one of my concerns was about the parking, that the requirement of having a parking spot might preclude some people from being able to take advantage of having an ADU. And my other concern was about Airbnbs, that by precluding the eight-month owner occupancy requirement, that people would make use of that. I've lived in places where people use ADUs for that purpose, which, again, there are advantages and disadvantages, right? I don't know how much of a risk that is right now for us in Pasco, but it is something which further down the line, we may have to deal with the results of certain decisions we've made. So that's what I got for you. Okay. Now, I don't believe anyone in the audience is here to talk about that. ADUs? No? Okay, all right. So with that, I think we can move on to our next workshop. Thank you, everybody, for speaking up on that one. Our next workshop is about B code amendment, and this is regarding car washes in C3 zoning districts within 300 feet of residential zoning districts. This is Master File CA 2021007. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commission. And this is a fairly straightforward item tonight. There's no action expected of the commission. But before you, we have an agenda item that we received through a request to perform a code amendment to allow car washes within 300 feet of residential districts in the C3 zoning district. So, the report has an inventory and a summary of the PMC regulations that would, that currently accompany car washes in both in the C1 zoning district and the C3 zoning district. You'll see also a summary of both Kennewick's and Richland's regulations that deal with car washes. The Kennewick regulation seems to focus a bit more on noise. Actually, it seemed to focus a lot more on noise than the Richland regulations do. And then at the bottom of page three in the report, you'll see a summary of the applicant's proposal for allowing them within the C3 zoning districts. And the major points of, let's call it mitigation, are the location on a minor or arterial street. The business must be on a minor arterial or arterial street. You see a recommendation for stacking lengths for vehicles, and then a recommendation that any operation include limits on the daily hours that they are... limits on the daily hours, uh, that they are allowed to operate. And then s- two more on the equipment associated with the car wash, and some screening requirements. Um, as I mentioned, this, uh, uh, it is a proposed code amendment, so, uh, there are options, of course, including, uh, no, or possibly, or yes, through a special permit, uh, for example. Um, you do have a very, very rough ordinance attached to the report that probably isn't a whole lot of value right now, depending on what the commission entails. Uh, but what I would propose is that if the commission is of a mind or has thoughts on this issue, uh, we can, uh, hear those tonight, and then, depending on what those thoughts are, the appropriate action at the June meeting would be to, um, or likely would be to schedule a hearing and, uh, provide the proper, uh, notification.
Thank you very much. Um, let me first go to initial questions, uh, from my commissioners. Questions or comments?
Quick question, Commissioner Handler here. What feedback have you gotten from Kennewick or Richland as to how successful?
None.
None?
Yeah, none. Oh, and by the way, I just learned this evening, uh, now, this is, this would pertain to automated systems, so not the coin-operated systems. Uh, it'd be, um, similar to, uh, you know, the Bush car washes that we see kind of all over the place, uh, yeah.
And I, I was, I was curious about this list, because this list does include not just the automated. This includes the coin-operated one as well.
It, it does. I, I'm frankly, I don't think, I don't think the, uh, author of the report knew about whether it was automated or coin-operated, and there's a couple that are missing here that I frequent.
And I was really surprised to see Liberty Car Wash being, saying it's not within three hundred feet of residential, that's on Convention right off Burden. That's like right behind.
It's right, next to residential.
It's right next, so it said, this says no, but then-
That's a mistake.
Then Bush Car Wash, which is right next on Burden, which is now, I think it's called Mister something, um, that says, yes, it is within residential. And I don't, I don't think that's within three hundred feet of the housing that is behind, um, Walmart. Is that three hundred feet?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Who?
Yeah.
So, anyway, I'm not sure this, this list is completely up to date. Any other questions or comments from staff, initial, from staff, pardon me, from commissioners?
Uh, this is Commissioner Cochran. I noticed the same things, Madam Chair, so you're, you're on target. I, I don't think the Bush car wash is within three hundred feet, and the other one was way close, so, um, the other thing, I, you know, I, I think I like some of these things. It's some of the similar things that we were dealing with, with, uh, mini storage, and so I like the notion that we're trying to do something from a, you know, keeping a little bit away from a residential neighborhood, so. So, I'm, I'm supportive of this, but yeah, I think the, the report here is accurate.
Thank you, Commissioner Cochran. All right, we do happen to have four individuals in the audience. Um, this is not, and I know you all have been informed of this, this isn't a public hearing, um, but do you have questions or comments that you would like to make? And i- if you would, I would say that we have about, we have the opportunity for you to do about questions or comments for about three minutes each. If that's something someone would be interested, you just have to come up to the mic with your name and city of address. Yeah, sure.
Yes, my name is John-
Oh, wait, we gotta get the microphone.
Oops. My name is John Ramsey, um, and, uh, and I'm the owner of P S Mark Properties in Pasco, which is Ramsey backwards. That was our kids' code name when we went to pick them up at school. Um, we had, uh, I, I, I didn't know if this was a hearing or how we're doing this, so I just wanted to say that, um, this is a tunnel car wash. I have my engineer here. Um, the quietness, uh, the code was made for, um, uh, outdoor car washes that were operated twenty-four hours a day. Uh, this is only going to be operated during daylight, basically hours. Uh, we've done a very good job of putting everything in a tunnel to keep the noise in the tunnel. Um, we're a hundred and seventy-seven feet from the nearest home, um, and there's Chapel Hill Boulevard, which is five lanes, and then the freeway, which is eighty-five feet from us, uh, which is six lanes. So, there is a lot of noise. The buildings, um, did that go up on anything?
Not yet. John, are you putting it up? Uh, it looks like it's coming.
Oh, there it is.
Okay.
You can see that, that this, uh, uh, right here, there's a freeway right here. Chapel Hill Boulevard is right here. Our buildings that we put in right here have mitigated the noise from this freeway. These residents appreciated that, for starters. Uh, this building here will mitigate the noise from the freeway also. Um, so, um, we've gone into a lot of detail as far as the vacuums will be all enclosed, the, you won't hear the noise of the vacuum cleaners, or, and, uh, we've, uh, we, uh, I own Broadmoor RV also, which is just down the road down there, so, uh, that this building here will be, uh, I have a personnel that will be active at that, uh, spot also, being able to, uh, keep it clean, work on it. Uh, I just, uh, I think that it's a good project, and it's a good spot for it. Uh, this side of town needs, needs it. We don't need to go to Road sixty-eight, and, uh, that's what, we're starting a meat market, a deli is going in here, too, so trying to keep the thing to the local community. There's a thousand new homes in this area, uh, and it eats us, kind of, uh, instead of having to drive down the Road sixty-eight, the confusion, the Road one hundreds are going to get, uh, congested. Uh, this is a very good, uh, fit for the community, I believe, so.
Great.
Okay?
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Ramsey.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, did you have, was that a question for Mr. Ramsey?
A question in, in gen- in general, yeah, in general. Um, no, yeah, um, I think, for me, the big, the big issue is kind of like going back to the, um, stor- storage, the storage facilities is, um, the aesthetics surrounding, um, a car wash, and, you know, wh- wh- what does the building look like? You know, what, what, what's the landscaping around it? You know, how, how, how does it appear in, in general to people walking around and using the facility? Um, those, those are concerns that are going to be, are going to have to be dealt with, you know, on, ongoing, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure you understand that, so.
Sure, and I understand that also, and that's why I have an engineer, and that's why we have, you know, my buildings that we built right there, if you drive by them, uh, very aesthetic. We've done the, um, the lawn and the manicure out there. We have, uh, Bagley Landscaping takes care of it every week. Uh, so, and the building that I build, uh, am going to build there, uh, Bruce Baker is my architect, and, uh, we're going to build a nice building. It's not going to be a, you know, uh, the piece of junk. We ju- we just don't do that. I've been in the Tri-City since nineteen seventy-three, uh, Broadmoor RV, uh, we've done the, uh, stucco on the outside of all of our buildings, you know? That was within code of the, of the, there's, there's a lot of guys that haven't done that. Uh, when Rustine built his building, it didn't, they didn't do that, so. Um, and, and, uh, but I felt that there was a lot of need to do the proper things, um, and we do a lot of things for the city of Pasco, you know, the Special Olympics, Police Foundation, uh, several thousand dollars a year, but we're a member of this community, and we feel strongly about that.
Very good. That's beautiful. I, I was, I was, I was tou- I was speaking more in terms of general thinking in, you know, overall about, about any car washes that, you know, it sounds like you're doing a great job, so.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, you gotta, I gotta blow my horn every once in a while, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey.
Any other questions?
Thank you, and I just want to remind everyone that, again, Mr. Ramsey isn't on, he's not up for a public hearing right now.
No, I know.
So, please, we don't want to, we don't want to, uh, try and, um-
Am I to understand, then, there will be a public hearing on this?
Yes.
Later on?
Yes, there will, there will be.
Okay, and then that way, everybody that wants to talk about it can talk about it.
Yeah, can do that, then.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Unless-
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Cochran.
Yeah, Commissioner Cochran, please.
So, I, I had a suggestion. I, I don't know, and maybe this is something that Mr. Ramsey can help stop with, but if there is a car wash, uh, industry standards for soundproofing and, you know, tunneling and keeping sound on vacuums and car washes, you know, maybe one of the, the compromises on this would be, you know, um, if you make the necessary industry standard improvements for soundproofing and, and aesthetics and other things, if there were such industry standards that engineers know about that are building car washes, you know, I don't have a clue, but if there were, maybe that's an alternate, uh, opportunity in the code to say, look, if you don't do those things, it's three hundred feet, but if you do do those things, it's a hundred and fifty feet. I don't know. I mean, it's just, um, that might be, i- if staff were informed about those options that the industry has, then maybe that would be something we can include. I, I, I don't know how much work that is. I'm just bringing it up as an, as a potential.
Yeah, and I understand that, and wh- what I'm saying is that, that we believe that the code itself is set up for, uh, um, uh, outdoor car washes where they were noisy and twenty-four hours a day, and it doesn't specifically talk about automatic car washes that are only open a, a certain amount of time of the day. These car washes are built to keep, uh, the noise down. I mean, that's why they're tunnel car washes. Every, all their, all the noise is supposed to be kept inside, basically. So, they're not, uh, you know, when you pull the trigger on an outdoor car wash, and you're clo- I mean, it makes a lot of noise, and the, and at two o'clock in the morning, I can understand where somebody would be upset if they were living within a hundred feet of, of the thing, but that's not going to happen under this car wash. It's just going to be on a daily basis. And again, uh, so, I, I think we need to look, maybe look at the code itself. Uh, I don't know if that's a, a state city code, or if that's a, a state code, but the code itself is really ambiguous as far as separating between an automatic car wash that's open, uh, you know, a certain amount of time that has an attendant, and a car wash that is open twenty-four hours a day, that doesn't have an attendant, and guys go in and wash their cars and blast their music and, uh, while they're washing their cars, which they have every right to do, but they don't need to do that in a residential area, whereas an automatic one would shut the lights off at eight o'clock at night and turn people away, so. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey.
Anything else?
This is Commissioner Lerman.
Commissioner Lerman, yes?
Um, two, two things. One, um, is there a ability to see the, the map or the drawing that, uh, Mr. Ramsey, um, was, uh, I, I think, sharing that? We couldn't be able to see it from our, um, virtual-
Madam Chair, there is not, that, there is not that opportunity for the commissioners to see at home.
Ah, unfortunately.
And I do want to stress that, and again, I do want to stress that this is not an advertised public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Um, and then, second, um, Mr. Ramsey had mentioned about lights being shut off at eight o'clock. Um, so I include parking lot, um, lights, and I'm trying to envision, um, neighbors that are in a second story, second story homes and stuff like that, um, getting light pollution. I'm just trying to envision.
So, the, the question, Mr. Ramsey, was, um, with your statement that the business would close at eight PM, would there still be lights on after eight PM, and the concern was for second story, um, dwellers?
Uh, w- well, we have, um, lot lights in the other building area, in that parking lot. There's, there's lighting in there, and we went with low-density, uh, lights to keep, to, you know, that are pointed away from the residential area. Uh, I, I'm sure they won't be turned off, but they will be, you know, I need to illuminate the building for security reasons, so we will, you know, do basically what we've done in the other parking lot. That, uh, the, uh, hundred, and that's a hundred and seventy-five car parking lot on the other side that's right next to it. And I'm sorry, they can't see the picture, but we'll do that in the hearing, too.
Okay. Great. Anything else, Commissioner Lerman?
No, thank you very much. Appreciate the answer.
Okay. Commissioners, any other concerns or questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Ramsey. Um, okay, that took a little bit longer than three minutes, but I think those were important questions that were being asked. Was there anyone else in the audience who needed to come up and, uh, make a statement? No? One other person? Okay, please state your name and city of address for the records.
First, your, your, Kenwick.
Gotta press the microphone.
Bruce Baker, um, Kennewick, Washington. Um, I just want to emphasize that we can meet those noise requirements, the, the maximum noise requirements of fifty-seven, DVA, at the residential property. So, within, with all the equipment being inside the building, we can meet those noise requirements-
Great.
-by the city code, so.
Good to know.
So, yeah, so all the equipment's inside the building.
Good to know. All the equipment, thank you. That was, um, Commissioner Cochran's question, I believe. Thank you for that, Mr. Baker. Okay. And it does not look like anyone else from the audience is, uh, trying to come up and speak at the podium right now. Uh, Mr. White?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and I, I just want to stress, um, again, um, I, I mean, if, if all property owners were like Mr. Ramsey, we could eliminate half of our zoning code. Um, but, but this would apply to all properties in the, in, in the appropriate zone, so please keep that in mind as we move forward with the process.
Yes. Uh, thank you for that, Mr. White. So, I wanted to ask a question. Who is Richard Simon? Do we know, and why was this, uh, request submitted?
Well, I assume he's representing Mr. Ramsey. Um, I would assume he's some kind of consultant now. He was Ri- former, uh, I think, planning manager, perhaps, for the city of Richland.
Rick Simon was just a gentleman that we hired, uh, to help us go through the process. Uh, that's all it was. Yeah. He was supposed to be here, but he is gone. He went to D E here or something for a while. All right?
All right. I, I'm doing it, too. Can you believe that? So, I was just going to say, one of the things that would help me would be to see a map, so I can see what's three hundred feet from residential and see what, what isn't. Um, I, as I mentioned, I live really close to the car wash on Convention, um, and interestingly, I never thought about the noise of the, uh, what is it, the vacuums, things like that, and when that happens at certain hours, but if I were to be the house immediately adjacent to that, that would drive me crazy. Um, so I wouldn't wish that on my worst, my worst enemy. Um, so, at least having that, that map would really help me have an idea of what we're talking about. Um, and that is my request for, when we move on with this one. Any other thoughts, commissioners? No? Not seeing anything else? All right, well, this was just a workshop, and we have now made it through both of our workshops that we had on the docket for today. So, uh, with that, I believe, are there any, there, is there any other business, Mr. White?
Uh, just very briefly, uh, the mini storage issue that count, that, uh, the commission considered last month is, uh, at, at council workshop this Monday, along with, um, I'm forgetting. Um, there's two other items, but I can't remember what they are. Uh, but, um, there's also two other, uh, land use items. Oh, Jimmy, the, uh, uh, consideration of the, uh, city adoption- The uh, uh, consideration of the uh city adoption of our comprehensive plan. Prior to the Board of County Commissioners approval. Which um, uh, allows us to move forward with items within our existing urban area. Pending land use items, uh, independent of the county's decision process. And they are considering the um comprehensive plan uh secondarily, at least. They need to check the box that says it meets countywide planning policies. But more importantly, they'll be considering, and because they have to approve or deny, our urban growth expansion uh request. So uh, June first, two, the first Tuesday in June, uh, I believe it's a seven P M meeting at the Happo Center. So it'll be a public hearing, just FYI. Um, and uh, they'll be considering both Pasco's and the city of Cornell's uh U G A expansions and the county comprehensive plan.
Perfect. All right, thank you very much for that. And um, with that, I would adjourn our meeting. It's not a public hearing, but it just makes me happy doing that at seven-twenty-one. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.